That's what I meant, yeah.
Six o'clock.
Yeah.
How are you? What are you doing?
Really?
Awesome. Look at that, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
You're fourteen?
She goes, yeah.
Awesome. Did, did your boyfriend come too? Do you have a boyfriend coming? No. Fourteen, well, awesome. What do you want for your birthday? I think your mom should get you a puppy. You want a new puppy?
God, Cochran.
Okay, alright, alright. I don't want to hear it, sir. What would you name her? Hammy, nice, nice. Hey, Mom? We're, we're dealing with birthday gifts over here, so I hope you all step that up a notch. This is a good list.
He just recommended a puppy.
A living.
Thanks, huh?
A living animal. She encountered with a different living animal.
Get yourself a parrot. They live for fifty years.
He's such a big help.
Okay.
Not a big bird fan.
Turtles live for a hundred years. Yeah. I think you should. We could name him Turd. I'm telling ya. I'm sorry. We only have, she also said it's her fourteenth birthday. When her boyfriend didn't make it. Okay, good answer.
Good answer.
Well, you're a beautiful answer. Happy birthday. Bye, cutie.
Spending her birthday with us. Ponce is always making us look bad by dressing up. Always showing us up.
Take it, take it.
He is so stylish.
We had a funny situation happen.
Has he ever come up here anymore, or is he around?
He's around. He don't come up there anymore.
I ran for, uh, city council one time. He showed up at my front doorstep.
Are you running for it?
Yeah, I won it.
Oh, you were on the job?
But then I realized that I couldn't be in there because of my job, because I didn't ask. So they wanted to fire me.
Oh wow.
Not fire me, but they said it'd probably be your best judgment if you.
So how are you allowed to do those choices?
Because it's different. There's something between the school boards different than the city. We just had to have that tonight. That's what I'm saying. I remember that.
I was like, I won't be here for five.
Y'all ready? I call this meeting the Chrome Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a form of board members is present. That this meeting has been duly called in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. This board will now adjourn into executive session. The time is six PM. I love the big crowd. Welcome. This board is now back in open session. The time is six thirty-six. At this point, if you would stand, Dr. Cochran will lead us in invocation, and then we've got some pledge leaders.
Please stand and pray with me. Gentlemen, Father, I just want to thank you for allowing us here to gather tonight, and, uh, as we decide our directions for Chrome ISD and, and, uh, ways to serve the students and these families and the teachers. Please bless and guide us in decisions we make in your best interest. Dear God, thank you for all, all the men and women that serve and protect us. Please guide us as we serve this community today. In Jesus' name, pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Fought, you got some pledge leaders for us today?
Melinda said I had to use the microphone. I'm so soft spoken.
Did you turn it on?
If you are a pledge leader from Dyer Elementary, please come up here and join me.
Is it on? I don't think it's on.
And we couldn't even tell.
It's on.
Does it?
Oh, yeah.
Hi, guys. Alright, y'all turn around this way and face them. And I'll tell them what you're doing here. Alright, so I did things a little bit differently for my pledge leaders this month. She's okay. Typically, we pick a group or a club, like bilingual club or NEHS, but this round, I decided that I would send a form to my teachers and I asked them to nominate someone who is a quiet leader, who has integrity, who follows the essential fifty-five, who is just always doing the right thing. You know you can count on them. And so that's how these kids ended up here today. Super proud of them. They are definitely leaders on my campus. They're gonna introduce themselves to you. They're gonna tell you their name, what grade they're in, and their house. Piper, you're closest to me. Are you up?
My name is Sadie, and, and I'm in second grade in the house of Isabendi.
My name's Piper. I'm in first grade, and I'm in Isabendi.
Tell them your name. Her name is Lisi.
Hi, Lisi.
Hi. Lisi, and she's in pre-k. And then she's in the black house. Good job.
My name's Jay, and I'm in, um, altruism.
What grade are you in?
Um, kindergarten, garden.
My name is Water, and I'm in Isabendi, and I'm in kindergarten.
My name is Marys, and I'm in fifth grade, and I'm in the house of River.
My name's Olivia, and I am in third grade, and I'm the house of Isabendi.
My name's Aubrey, and I'm in the house, and my grade level is fourth, and I'm in the house of altruism.
My name's Jolie, and I'm in altruism, and my grade is fourth.
My name is Evelyn. I'm in fifth grade, and I'm in the house of Amistad.
I'm the black house, and my name is Noah, and, and I'm, and I'm in altruism, and, 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 uh, pre-k.
My name's Barrett. I'm in fourth grade, and I'm in the house of Isabendi.
My name is Joshua, and I'm in fourth grade, and I'm in the house of River.
My name's Dallary. I'm in fifth grade, and I'm in altruism.
My name's Caleb Slane, and I'm in third grade, and I'm in the house of Amistad.
My name is Adalisa. My grade is second grade, and I'm the house of Amistad.
My name is Decker. I'm in fifth grade, and I'm in the house of Isabendi.
Couple more.
My name's Carter, and I'm in first grade, and I'm in the house of Amistad.
My name's Reagan, and I'm in kindergarten, and I'm in the house of altruism.
You ready to lead the pledges? Alright, hand on your heart. Here we go.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where all its sins, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one in the physical.
Good job, guys.
Good job.
Thank y'all. Alright, we have a few more special recognitions to do, and then we'll release you guys that need to get on with your night. Alright, um, Ms. Stupka, you have a paraprofessional?
I do have a paraprofessional of the month, and I am so excited to share her with you tonight. I'm gonna not get emotional, so I wrote everything down. Uh, I started teaching in Chrome ISD in two thousand and six, and Mackenzie was in my very first kindergarten class. Uh, Mackenzie and I both cried every day of kindergarten, but we made it, and we're good. So then in two thousand twenty-one, when I became a principal, I hired Mackenzie as a paraprofessional. She has served in a couple of different roles on our campus, and she makes me proud in every role she serves on campus. She is our current STEAM teacher and does special areas for all five hundred kids. She provides in-class support. She does morning duty and greets kids out front. She takes names in our after-school dismissal. Uh, we can dismiss five hundred and twenty kids in about fifteen minutes, and Mackenzie gets it going every day. She truly keeps our best systems up and running and running smoothly. We have an idea this year to do something a little out of the box. We wanted to let fourth and fifth grade choose where they sit at lunch, and everybody thought we were crazy, but Mackenzie took it and ran with it, and she has made it successful. Uh, it's making a huge impact on those kids, and we've reduced behavior referrals. They're speeding up around the campus. It truly has become a leadership thing, and Mackenzie has led it. She's truly part of the Chrome community. She spends her Saturdays watching KYSA games, dance recitals, you name it, she's there. The kids love her, and so do we. We are so thankful to have Mackenzie at Hansel.
It is my honor and pleasure to welcome up Missy Juarez. Come on up, Miss Juarez. So let me tell you a little bit about Miss Juarez. Um, she's been at Dodg, um, longer than I have, so she's been one of the staples there since I've been there. Um, and I call her a utility player because she can do anything. She works in our gen ed classes, but she also is a special ed teacher. And for the last couple of years, she's been serving as a special ed teacher in a self-contained classroom, um, which is very different from what she was doing prior to that. But she did that with a joyful heart, jumped in and said, "I can make this, uh, work for us." And so she did that with a smile on her face, um, and helping us out in those areas. But I want to, I want you to hear what her coworkers said about her. Miss Juarez is a true example of leadership, dedication, and heart. She leads with a calm, steady presence, and consistently goes above and beyond to support both students and colleagues. Whether balancing the workload, offering encouragement, or helping others find solutions, she makes everyone around her feel valued and supported. Her commitment to building strong, positive relationships creates an atmosphere of trust and kindness, where every student feels seen and cared for. She approaches every day with patience, inclusivity, and joy, making learning fun and meaningful for all. And beyond the classroom, Miss Juarez is the teammate who lifts others up. She celebrates their successes and steps in without hesitation. Watching her teach is truly inspiring, and I couldn't agree more with that. She has served as one of our team leads for special ed and has served as a mentor to lots of people, and I just couldn't do what I do every day without her doing the job that she does every day, and so I appreciate you so very much.
Alright, I think Ms. Boone has some students of the month from the middle school.
Okay, and my first student of the month for KMS is Elena Morris. Is Elena here? Yes, there she is. Okay, oh, see? She's excited for you two. Alright, so, um, I write down everything that I want to say at these so that I don't get off track, because I can ramble when I talk about y'all. What I want to tell you about Elena Morris is that she is a sixth grader who is one of those students who makes a positive impact on the world around her through the consistency she has in her character. She's a quiet leader, the kind of student who leads by example, treats everyone with kindness, and always has a smile on her face. Elena is active in band, student council, and takes advanced classes where she excels academically. Her teachers describe her as hardworking, dependable, and compassionate, the kind of student who fills others' lives up just by being herself. I asked Elena's teachers to share some quotes with me, and these are some things that they said. I'm not gonna read all of it, but you see this. Elena has been a joy to have in my leadership class. Her kindness, maturity, and willingness to help others make her a true example of what a leader should be. Her positivity and determination make her stand out, and she continues to make our class a better place every day. Another teacher said, "She's a kind leader," there's a pattern here, "amongst her peers by leading conversations and answering questions. She is always ready to learn and try her best. She's thoughtful to adults and peers. She's a ray of sunshine with her smile, and makes KMS a better place." And then the last one I'll read, and then I'll give you this, is Elena goes out of her way to help others around her, and is kind and caring to everyone she comes in contact with. She is a wonderful student and an even better person in so many ways. I am so proud that you are our KMS student of the month. Okay, our next student of the month is Jagger Jones. Jagger, come up here. Alright, Jagger is, um, one that I have, uh, I've known for a long time, so it's, it's exciting for me to be able to brag on him in front of this huge audience. Jagger is an outstanding eighth grader, whose leadership shines in all that he does through the way he carries himself every single day. He is humble, hardworking, and kind, a quiet leader, again, who inspires others simply by doing what's right and giving his best in everything he takes on. Jagger is involved in athletics and honors band. He is currently taking advanced courses and high school credit classes, all while maintaining exceptional grades. His teachers describe him as respectful, dedicated, and a joy to have in class. I've had the pleasure of knowing Jagger for seven years, first as his principal in elementary school and now through his middle school journey. In all of that time, one thing has never changed: his strong character and genuine heart. Jagger's integrity and leadership truly set him apart. I also asked his teachers to share some words about him, and a clear pattern developed. Jagger has been an incredible young man to coach on the court and teach in the classroom. He gives maximum effort in everything he does, whether it's practice, competition, or academics. What separates Jagger is his attitude. He shows up every day, ready to work, never complains, and always looks for ways to improve, and I heard something similar from your band director. He's coachable, dependable, and sets the tone for others around him through his example. When his teammates see how hard he works and how he carries himself, it raises the standard for everyone else. Jagger represents everything we want in a student athlete in Chrome: effort, character, and leadership. He's hardworking, bright, has a personality that brings smiles to both students and teachers' faces. Jagger exemplifies what it means to be a Chrome Bobcat. I won't keep going, but you see we have more. So I am so proud to share Jagger Jones with you, and, uh, proud that he's a KMS Bobcat.
Alright, Dr. Bonsu, I think you got some people to recognize, too.
I do. Mr. Hicks, will you please come up here? So, um, I've got a lot to say about Mr. Hicks, and he hates all of this right now, just FYI. Mr. Hicks is, uh, one of those silent leaders. He's, uh, one of our amazing, uh, math teachers at Chrome High School. Uh, higher-level math, he knows it, but not only does he do math, he also works with science. He works with the other departments, uh, to help them understand math and what they need. He goes out of his way, um, all of the time, and this is what his colleagues have to say. Mr. Hicks intentionally forms caring relationship with students. He's always demonstrating higher-level thinking, encouraging students to step outside their normal boundaries to do the same. Each week, he gives out an antidote from the think, the think tank, which gives students and teachers food for thought about their daily lives. Mr. Hicks makes sure he's always available to help his students, and passion for what he is teaching makes an impact on his students. I overheard a student leaving his classroom and say to a friend, "Dude, I just love math." And you don't hear that in high school much, just, just FYI. Mr. Hicks' dedication to making the subject accessible and exciting clearly resonates with his students. Another teacher says, "Mr. Hicks is a very supportive colleague. He checks in and offers advice and encouragement, and all his students can see how much he cares about them and loves the subject." I'm a math guy, so I usually resonate with math people, so I'm biased. However, his, his, his colleagues nominated him, and it was overwhelming, uh, how much they loved him and respected him, so, uh, Mr. Hicks, thank you. I've got two students. Uh, we've got, uh, one who I did not want to know until she got here, but Mom spilled the beans. Uh, would you come up here for me, Aubrey? Should we turn this way? Aubrey's, uh, an amazing freshman at Chrome High School. Um, she is an, an amazing young leader. I see her every morning. Uh, she says hi, we fist bump, um, and, uh, we, she always comes to me and says, "Hi, hey, how's it going?" And, and just, just bubbly, uh, full of life. Everyone loves Aubrey, and she's super involved in everything at Chrome High School. Uh, so this is what her teachers have to say, and I am gonna read it, because I want you to have this. Um, so, uh, from Ms. Reynolds, Aubrey's a hardworking and focused student, and she has consistently demonstrated maturity and balance in academics and extracurricular interests. She sets a great example for her peers with a positive spirit and a strong work ethic. Coach Holmes, "It is no surprise that Aubrey has been nominated for this award. She is diligent and eager student that takes on every task with determination to find success and understanding in all circumstances. She has a bright and bubbly personality that shines in the classroom and is welcoming to all that encounter her. I truly enjoy having Aubrey in class, and I know she has a very bright future ahead of her." Mrs. Thomas, "Aubrey's a fantastic student. She's exceptionally bright, kind, and natural leader, always willing to assist her classmates." Ms. Elkington, "Aubrey is always ready and willing to answer questions and participate in class." You see the trend. Mr. Ferris, one of the band director, "Aubrey has been an outstanding member of the marching band. She's becoming a great saxophone player, and she was featured as a bassoonist," basically, did I say that? Bassoon, okay, there you go, "in our state advancing march production. She's always has a positive attitude and puts forth tremendous effort, both on and off the field. Aubrey is great." Director Huff says, "Aubrey's a great kid with a fantastic attitude. We are impressed with her willingness to go the extra mile for our program." Coach Manon, "Miss Reed is quiet and reserved in class, but is always pleasant to talk to. She always turns in assignments on time, that's a good thing, and displays exemplary work. She's pleasure, she's a pleasure to have in class. And Coach D, "Aubrey has accepted her role as a student manager and is doing an amazing job. She comes to women with a smile on her face and a great attitude. She has a servant's heart and wants to help her teammates and her coaches out in any way possible. We are so happy that Aubrey made the choice to stay with us and be a lady cat." That's, this is a good problem, right? When everyone wants to brag on you. Thank you for being our student of the month, Aubrey. We've got one more. He's not here, so I'm not gonna read all of his, but I'm gonna read some of this. He won't be here to talk about it, so, um, Jay Sanchez, he's, uh, one of our freshman students, um, and he is an exceptional young man, very respectful, yes ma'am, yes sir, um, whatever you need, he goes out of the way, um, to do it for you. And honestly, you wouldn't know he was a freshman, uh, because freshmen all tend to act certain ways. Um, maturity doesn't hit them that quickly, but for him, he came in, uh, looks like, he already looks like a grown man, actually. Um, and, but, but super impressive young man, and, and he has a tremendous heart, uh, but some of his teachers, I'm not gonna read all of them. Ms. Elkington says, "Jay is always respectful and attentive in class. I love to have him in class." Uh, Jay's pretty much always, this is from Dr. Taze, "Always willing to help others. He's a great student." Coach Davis, "Mr. Sanchez is a delightful student in my fifth period world geography class. Jay's leadership in class has been truly remarkable. His kindness and respect for everyone creates a positive and productive classroom environment. I especially admire his ability to stay organized and on task throughout the period." Did you hear that? Organized for a young man in ninth grade? That's a big deal. Um, Jorge's, "Jay's hard work and dedication have set a great example for all his classmates." We're just blessed at, at Chrome High School, because we're here only talking about two students, uh, to, to brag on him. We've got eight hundred kids who are great, uh, but today, uh, you two got shined, so thank y'all for coming to Chrome High School and keep being that way. Thank you, parents.
Before Mr. Bogart gives you all the opportunity to leave, students, teachers, thank you so much for making today a great day to be a Bobcat. You guys killed it. Um, does anybody have a birthday today? I think we do have a birthday today. Can we sing to you? Perfect. Say, "Happy birthday to you." "Happy birthday to you." "Happy birthday dear Sadie." "Happy birthday to you."
Great, congratulations to all our award winners, and, um, we appreciate everybody being here. If y'all, y'all are welcome to stay for the business part of the meeting, but if you need to get on with your evening, you're welcome to leave at this time. Sorry, I've been doing this so long, you can't, you can't crack me. Did Melinda go back to check the open forum? Is, did Melinda go back to check the open forum?
Alright, nobody signed up for open forum?
Alright, so we'll get into our reports. I think we're gonna start those off with Misty with her financial report. Nobody ever wants to stay to hear you talk, Misty, that's so sad. It's okay.
Alright, can y'all hear me?
I'm not sure that mic was working.
It was working going through the back.
Can we crank it up next time?
I think Eric's is working, I could hear you.
This all works, but I don't think the handheld was.
Was the handheld working out there?
Did you break your computer code? Just can't have nasty things. Probably pulling everybody's driving record, see, see who's gonna get at the stop sign.
So I'm gonna go ahead and give you business office updates. First of all, uh PIMS snapshot was October thirty first, uh so Halloween was the first time I've had it happen on October thirty first. I can remember, but anyway, just to let you know, we ended with an enrollment of two thousand five hundred seventy eight students. And that was an increase of six students from last year. We ended in May with um two thousand five hundred seventy two. And then that was an increase um of thirty six kids from the snapshot date last year. So that's just to give you a little bit of update on that. Our PIMS coordinator, Bobby Lackey, I know she, you guys don't get to see her a lot, but she's behind the scenes. And she has been working extremely hard. So once snapshot happens, then the real work starts behind the scenes and so she has been uh doing a great job. One of the things this year is we've had to really look at all of our staff uh very hard because we had the teacher retention allotment and also the support staff allotment this year. And so we had to make sure and verify that all these teachers that we have in the system um through Aries, through Ascender, that they are getting reported correctly or we wouldn't get the money back from all the mandated raises. So at one point we found out that we had twenty people that, you know, if if we didn't verify that, we wouldn't have get get that money back from the state. So we've been able to go in and uh start correcting that. So that that's a great thing. Um at this point, we only have four errors. Um it's due to December eleventh, I believe, to the um to the state. So that's great that we only have four errors. And so I just wanna give a shout out to our PIMS coordinator Bobby Lackey. And the other two people that work very hard on this, personnel and payroll is Mr. Butler. He's behind the scenes making sure that uh people are accurately um having their information correctly in the system. And also our payroll, Misty Waldron. So again, those two people along with Bobby are doing a great job. And then just upcoming for our December meeting is we have our first report. And so we do have an A, we have, I believe, a ninety six, but we'll give you more details in December on that. Okay, just to get into the general fund and I'll be really quick because I know there's a lot of reports tonight. But on the general fund, um I did wanna report that our local revenue, uh we have seven hundred sixty eight thousand dollars at this point um that we've collected. And if you look at the bar graphs on that, it's very um it's mirror image to two thousand twenty four. And so if you then drop down to, because it's like, why did we dip in two thousand twenty five and or twenty, I'm sorry, twenty five? And then our school year two thousand twenty six, we're back up. And if you look down into our prior year taxes, which is that fifty seven eleven, fifty seven twelve area. Last year at this point, we owed the county, um the tax assessors eighteen thousand dollars basically. And if you look over, just go right over to that current year, we've at this point, um as of today, we've collected over three hundred thousand dollars. So that's just been a big jump. So that's been a big jump. Um I did call the tax office just to ask like, why, why are we getting such a big jump? And and because if you look in um our current year, we're we actually have collected quite a bit more too. And so there's a couple of things. Uh we've had exemptions that um, you know, when we we bumped from forty thousand exemption in your homestead to a hundred thousand, there was two years there that you could get credit and that they you were able to or, you know, uh they were able to get that credit. And so we had to refund that money back because um we were giving them a forty thousand extension versus a hundred thousand. So that has, that has stopped and um so that's one of the reasons. Also, we're receiving more tax money earlier this year. Mortgage companies are starting to pay quicker. Don't know why, but they are. So that's a great thing. And then also, last year they were waiting to mail tax statements. This year they've already started mailing those out, so you'll be receiving those soon at home. Um and so we've been able to collect quicker on that because last year they were waiting on school districts that were um on TREs. And so um that was the reason for that. If you look at the state revenue, the next column over, you can tell that two thousand twenty six school year um is way up compared to the other two school years. That increase, just to give you a little bit of information on there is, remember we have a basic allotment of forty five dollars. That that's increasing as along with all household, two things that have gone on with the teacher retention allotment, the support staff allotment, the safety allotment and special ed. So that you can see that that increase is definitely helping us. If you flip to the second page where the expenses, so it's nice that it's helping us on the revenue, but remember we're gonna have to pay for those. So you can see on salaries and benefits, um we're at thirty four percent. So I always look at like the month of where we are. At this point, it should be thirty three percent or below in expenditures and I talked to you about that. This is the first time I've ever really brought to you that we're we're above that. You can see that those salary and benefits are going above and part of that's because I had to estimate. And and those raises that you can see are going above and um I'll talk to you a little bit about that in just a second on the third page. But um over in purchased services and also supplies and equipment, that's always a little bit above right now. And that's because we want them to spend money. We, this is this year's kids and so it's okay to have that in purchased services and supplies and equipments. So that is an okay thing, but if you get to the third page where it breaks it down. We are total expenditures at thirty five percent, which again, normally I would say thirty three percent and below is a good thing. I'm just monitoring that as we go. We, we're in areas that were just fine being at above thirty three percent, which would be student transportation, um co-curricular, principal on long-term debt. So those areas, we're above on those because we're just having to pay large expenses out. So again, there's nothing to be alarmed about. I'm just gonna be monitoring that and adjusting as we need to because of those those salary and benefit raises that we had to do. Do y'all have any questions so far on that?
I have a general question. So when we get to uh like purchase services, supplies and equipment, is there a point at which you become alarmed? Like is there a percentage based on what we're at in the year where we'll have to start figuring something? Do you see planes at like at what point?
Right, well, all of those services, yes. I look at each month like what we should be at and and go below, but we, those are budgeted expenses. So we are monitoring that all the time as we approve POs. So I'm gonna know all the time, there shouldn't be any surprises on accounts going over. If there are, then we're gonna know the why because there was an emergency expense that came up. We're gonna be talking and 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 approving those, so. Any other questions? Okay, and just food service, um just a little bit about that is, and and Heather, our auditor, will talk about, but we do have a surplus in the fund balance again this year, which is a great thing. We are spending down some items, so that's, I just wanted to mention that. She'll go into more detail and you'll can, you can see where we are on that. But other than that, local revenue, state revenue, um federal revenue, it's it's very mirror image of what it was the last two years. So um what we're doing, we're on track.
Thank you, Misty.
Thank you.
We're gonna jump one item on the agenda, just so our district auditor is here this year. And so she doesn't have to sit through everything tonight, we're gonna go ahead and let her do her report. So if you are ready, floor is yours.
Alright, thank you, y'all. It's nice to meet everyone, I hope y'all are having a good evening. Uh my name's Heather Bullpoint, I've been with Hank and Zee Step now for almost two years. Previous to that, I was doing charter school consulting for for three years and then other audits for fifteen years before that. So I've been in the industry for quite a while, have a lot of experience with governmental audit. So I believe you're in good hands, even though I know that Mr. Carl Eaton has some big shoes to fill, so.
He'd only done it like thirty years.
I know, right? He's still fresh, he's still learning some things. But yeah, he is uh, he's actually still out and about. He's trying to back out some more so that he can get to that retirement point, so. Hopefully he's doing that, but he still, just to give you some peace, as we're um doing these transitions, we're still having him review the reports. So we get the Carl blessing stamp on it. So um just wanted to say that first and then um we'll jump into it. And so the way that I like to do it is I kinda just look through the, through the report, I flag some things, note some areas that I think are important. Just things to bring up or point out. And then if you have any questions throughout, please just jump in and say, hey, I wanna know more about this and we can um, we can talk about that. Page number three is the actual um audit report that we have. And um the second paragraph is where we have to say the fancy accounting language of the audit opinion. So I'm gonna read for you just that line. It says, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. So um by saying it is um presented fairly in all material respects is the way of saying that it is a clean or unmodified audit opinion. And then there's also no additional findings or anything that we had to know. So I like to point that out first so we can start off on a really good place. Then, we're gonna go to page fourteen. For me, if I've never done a a presentation for a district, I like to point out the fact that there's two sets of financial statements. I find that a lot of people have not um ever had the explanation of why there's two financial statement and what the difference is, so I just wanna go over that really quickly. Page fourteen and fifteen are exhibits A1 and B1. These are the government-wide financial statements. That's what you would normally get if you are a um full accrual um entity. So something like a nonprofit or even a for-profit organization. The difference between the what you guys are used to seeing and these financials is gonna be anything that's considered non-current. So your non-current assets like your, you know, buildings, furniture and equipment, and then your non-current debt or your non-current liabilities such as long-term debt. And in this case, um your pension accrual and OPEB accrual and all the fancy things that the government now makes us report that doesn't really mean a lot to everybody. So um those are the big changes on those reports. Also, there is a walkthrough page that will show you um on page eighteen. They are um reconciliations. And if you wanted to, you could read through this and it will tell you the differences between the fund financial statements you're used to seeing and the government-wide. So it tells you how we get there and what differences um are made up. On, back to page fifteen, there's one thing I do wanna point out. There's a prior period adjustment there of one point two million dollars. Now, I wanna point it out and then explain to you why it's not really that important, but because it's on there, I feel like I always wanna point it out so that nobody says, oh, we missed something or, you know. This number is actually fully explained back on page fifty-three what it actually is. And the reason why I say it's not that big of a deal is because it's only on the government-wide financial statements. It doesn't affect your fund statements. And so there's nothing on um the actual books or reporting for the district that would need to be done any differently. What makes up this adjustment is um a accounting standard change that happened this year. It was GAZB one oh one for compensated absences. And um the government decided this year that they wanted to consider how vacation was uh was taken into into consideration for future use. Again, it's one of those things that's considered a long-term debt. And because it's not, long-term debt's not maintained in your regular financials, it doesn't affect you from your day-to-day. So that accounted for about three hundred and sixty four thousand dollars. Then there were some um deferred charges on refunding and bond premiums that were associated with old bonds that had been paid off that needed to be written off from the past. It should have gotten written off during refunding and that did not happen. So I recognize the prior period adjustment to make sure that we took care of those. Again, just to reiterate, it does not and would not have affected your fund financial statements, but I didn't want you to see that number later and have any questions. Do you have any questions on that? I just wanna make sure that there's no concerns about it before I move on. Okay, so then that's all the just you should know, might wanna know information, we'll get to the good stuff. Okay, page sixteen is gonna be your actual fund financial statement. When we look at the general fund activity, just some things I wanted to point out is we had a um one point two million dollar decrease in cash. But we also had a um eight hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase in our due from other governments. So some of it is just due to timing. And that's gonna be the the due from other governments is our receivable related to our um FSP money from the state. So then if we look at the next page, sorry, or two pages down, page nineteen. This is gonna be our revenues and expenses uh for all those funds. And you're gonna see actually. I'm sorry?
Nineteen is blank.
Oh, sorry, twenty.
Okay.
So sorry. Page twenty's gonna show your revenues and expenses. So all the way down at the bottom, we can see that we ended the year in with a fund balance of twelve point four million. And a few lines above that is the forty eight thousand dollar surplus that we gained for this year. So we did have a surplus in the general fund. I do wanna run through some of the numbers that we have in the revenues and expenses just to see how we got there. Our local revenues actually went up about uh two hundred and sixty two thousand this year. And then our state programs actually decreased. So we did um not get as much money from our state programs that we usually received. And then our expenditures actually decreased a million dollars from last year. So we did really well on holding back on um spending to um compensate for the loss of revenue. Then the transfer, we did do a transfer of eight hundred and forty four thousand to cover that surplus. That was actually funds that had been sitting in that in an unrestricted capital projects fund um related to that tech stock project. So, or the tech stock reimbursement that happened. So we were able to use those funds to help um to take care of any deficit that we may have had this year and keep our general fund looking positive.
Heather, how much of that money, how much of that tech stock money is left?
That's the rest of it.
Oh, that is the rest of it?
Mm-hmm. The other fund column that's actually on page twenty-one is gonna be all of your special revenue funds. There is some exhibits in the back that detail out every one of those programs, but it's gonna be all your federal programs, state programs that have individual grants. So that's all what makes up that um that column. And then overall, um our overall local revenue, that's one thing that I really like to point out. So on um on page twenty-one, the far right, our local revenue for the year was twenty nine point six million. That's actually an increase of two point eight million from last year and that's primarily due to um interest and uh property taxes. On page twenty-three, we have the budget to actual comparison for the general fund. On page twenty-three, we have the budget to actual comparison for the general fund. And we did, um, the district did have a zero budget, um, or a zero balance budget. And you can see that we did end with the forty-eight thousand, so we did exceed that budget. Um, for our revenues, we received two point three million dollars less than, um, had been anticipated, but we spent one point five million dollars less. So that's how we were able to, um, compensate for that. I do wanna point out, those are the bulk of the financials, so before we go into just, there's a few footnote, or a few, um, notes that are in the report that I think are just important areas in case you have any more questions or details, but do you have any questions on actual financial statements before we peek at those?
So that's a delta of six hundred and fifty K, right from the total revenues to being up in the positive forty-eight K? Was that through the maintenance and operations of this line of six hundred?
The capital, yeah.
You're good, okay. Okay, page thirty-eight. This is the page on the notes that's gonna show your details of your capital assets and long-term debt. Those are just two areas that I think are, are really important to see and, um, your capital assets, you're just gonna be able to see the additions, um, that happened during the year. And we did a lot of additional construction projects. We can see, um, construction in progress of thirty-one point five million. Um, we did have some completed projects, about six point seven million that were moved over to buildings. So this just tells the story of exactly what was going on with those, um, those costs and the asset additions. And then on page thirty-nine is the summary of all your bonds, so if you were to have any new bonds this year, it would be listed there. Uh, the district did not have any new bonds, so you can just see the pay-down that was occurring throughout the year.
When, Heather, when it says ninety-eight refunding bonds, the outstanding amount's five thousand dollars, does that mean we only owe five thousand on that issue? Or is it in thousands? This may be in thousands. No, it's not in thousands.
I'm sorry, Nick, where are you looking?
So, page thirty-nine, the top of the page.
Mm-hmm.
The ninety-eight refunding bonds.
Oh.
Outstanding five thousand dollars.
It was, um, no, it was paid off.
Oh, okay.
So it was outstanding at the beginning of the year and we had one final five thousand dollar payment this year.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, so that one got paid off.
Yeah, I was like, oh, we just pay that off. I was just, get rid of it.
Yeah, we're down to, I think, what is it now? The twenty-fifteen bonds are the oldest bonds now that actually carry a balance. Um, on page fifty-two, it has the revenues, um, from local and intermediate sources. That's just because the revenue line is so large with being, you know, almost thirty million dollars, so that does give you a more detailed breakout if you, uh, were so intrigued to see what else, uh, makes up those numbers. Um, we already discussed the prior period adjustment, so we're just gonna flip through this. Um, the last part is the single audit. So, that starts on page seventy-seven, all the single audit documentation. Um, if you'll look at the bottom, we have put a note on page seventy-seven saying draft for discussion purposes only. I'm not sure if y'all are aware or have heard, so TEA actually sent out a letter, uh, earlier this month, or I believe maybe last month. And there is some fun things that are going on with the government, um, one of which is that they did not release a compliance supplement. Sorry, I know, I went kinda faster. Did y'all find?
No, the pages aren't matching up when you're saying a page number what we have.
Oh, page seventy-seven?
Is blank.
Well, there's a.
It's federal.
Down at the note.
There's a note at the bottom of it.
Okay, thanks.
I just wanted, sorry, I just wanted to point out that this is where it started and that we put a note at the bottom, cause all the, all the pages related to the federal grant will have this note on it. Um, so, when we do a single audit, um, we, a single audit is actually evaluating anything that we receive federal funds from. If you receive more than, or if you expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, we're required to evaluate the programs that gave the money. Next year, that's actually gonna go up to a million dollars, so, um, that'll change a little bit. However, we are given a compliance supplement to follow and it's actually for first to follow as an audit guide as well as the districts to follow for a, the way that things should be spent and all the requirements. There was never a twenty-twenty-five compliance supplement released. Um, we didn't realize until we got the notification from TEA that this was going to be a problem. So, you know, usually it's just kinda going with the flow of last year's document, especially being November, I would think, you know, they'd be saying, last year's is fine because you can't spend, you know, you don't know what you don't know. Um, however, that's not the case, so we cannot officially file a single audit report until they release the compliance supplement. Um, so because of that, TEA has extended their filing deadline to February to, to make sure that there's, um, time allowed. Uh, additionally, from that, um, federal program, TEA also implemented their new upload, um, site called, um, Audit Two Point Oh. After we complete the audit, we have to submit all the data virtually to them. It's not ready. So, usually for, you know, for all of the six-thirty districts that have a filing deadline of November twenty-seventh, um, that's when everything has to be uploaded to TEA. They said mid-December, they're hoping to be online and will start taking submissions. So because of that, uh, we don't know exactly when we'll be able to upload all the data. Um, everything can still be approved and then we'll just have you guys sign the certificate of board letter later on after we get the compliance supplement, as long as there's no changes. It's kinda one of those weird areas where we're just trying to do the best with the information we're given and hopefully now that the government's planning to go back to work soon, we'll be able to get some of the, um, some of the additional sources. So we're just trying to make sure that y'all aren't waiting on us for the numbers to at least get through this. So, that is why this is all flagged like this, just wanted to point that out and, and fully explain the situation that's, that's going on, that's beyond our control. Um, that being said, your single audit was over child nutrition and, um, we did not have any, any finding. That is noted on page eighty-three. I promise there's only one more thing to say and I know that I get long-winded. Um, so page eighty-three is where, um, it actually were to list out if there were any findings or modifications that were made. So on, um, line one, it says that there's an unmodified financial statements report. Um, no issues of material weakness or significant deficiencies, no issues of non-compliance. Um, the one area that I will get some questions on, so again, I always like to point out things that come back later, is number nine. Are you a low-risk auditee? No. The question is why? There's various reasons. Um, some of them is if you haven't had a single audit in, in two years or in every, or in the prior year, you're automatically considered a high-risk auditee. The other one is related to the single audit filing. It's a timing thing. It's required to be submitted by a certain date and if it doesn't, you're automatically a high-risk. All that does is create more work for us. We have to test forty percent of your programs rather than twenty percent of your programs. It's not anything negative upon the district, um, but what I think happened is that the, um, the report was sitting pending and the deadline passed. And so once it was finally approved, it was past the date and that was actually, um, Carl Deaton found that in my thing. He said, actually, they're not low-risk because of, because of that. So we just changed it in the report. It didn't change anything else. We had already done the coverage test for your single audit. But we do get the question of why am I not, why am I not low-risk? So just wanted to point that out. Um. The last page, page eighty-six, is just your detailed list of all the federal programs that you have. So, um, the district actually had a total of, um, one point two in federal programs, but only one point one that fall under the single audit requirement. So those are all just noted on eighty-six and eighty-seven. So that is the end of, um, my audit presentation. Um, I want to really say thank you to Ms. Missy Ward and then to Dr. Cochran. Everybody was wonderful at the district. The staff was great and, um, you know, transitioning from the way somebody's done it for thirty years into having somebody new can often be challenging and they were just wonderful to work with, so. That's what I have. Do you guys have any additional questions?
I don't think so. Thank you, Heather.
Alright, appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Alright, campus data reports. Starting to soften it. Always make you go first, don't they, Ms. Bowles? There's no, there's no action on it. Yes? It's not in our agenda. Oh, really? Sorry, I didn't have, I didn't even have it open. She didn't need us here.
At the end, at the end of, at the end of this, I mean, the worst case scenario is somebody, if they wanna make a motion to accept it, make a motion to accept it, you gotta sign it at the end anyway.
Yeah.
Sorry, Ms. Bowles, you waiting on us?
I am. Figure if I wait long enough, you know, they'll, exactly. Enough I needed to give me five or what we needed here.
One, two, three, eyes on me.
Exactly, just waiting on some eye contact. Well, this, uh, month, we're bringing you some data about our E-LAR curriculum and, uh, the assessments that we've completed. Um, you've been hearing us talking about the new Blue Bonnet curriculum and, uh, the updates on that. Uh, wanna let you know that, um, every one of the internalization meetings that I've been meeting in recently, people have said, huh, we feel like we've settled in. That was so good to hear because anytime that you start a new curriculum, it's going to have a learning curve. Um, but people are feeling much better about that and the consistency of meeting with our, um, instructional coaches has helped in their planning piece and then their comfort in teaching, so. Um, for, we are coming to you with our first three aligned assessments, um, and just remembering that when we say a hundred percent or ninety-three percent or a hundred percent, we're talking about those students that have made seventy or above. So we're talking about the passing standard, um, for those. This is once we have, um, gone through the whole teaching cycle, we've assessed, we've re, um, made any interventions or re-taught any concepts, um, to make sure that they are mastering those, um, at the end before we move on. Um, so just wanted to let you know that, um, our first third grade assessment was on classic tales. The next one, um, now these are not, we're not testing them over that. The reading skills are being taught through these topics. So, second topic was animal classification, scales, feathers and fur, and then the third one was the human body. Um, I know that we had some, uh, interesting room transformations into, um, some, uh, hospital rooms with surgery going on over the human body, so, uh, interesting things happening there. Um, I wanted to let you know that our strength in third grade right now, um, is using text evidence to support an appropriate response. And I can't tell you how many times I hear our teachers, where's the evidence? Where is it in your text? Go back and find it. And so they are, um, really honing in on that skill and it is certainly a strength in our third grade team right now. In fourth grade, um, we're reporting our second and third. There was some problems with our first aligned assessment, just, um, some, uh, technicalities on that and we decided not to include that one because it just wasn't coming across, um, consistently with all of our campuses. So, um, we moved on to our second and third. The second one was the art of invention and our kiddos got to learn about some, um, great inventors and, uh, learned their reading skills through reading stories about them. Um, and in the, and on that one, we were at eighty-seven percent. And then contemporary fiction, um, was the next unit and we were eighty-five percent. Um, our strengths in fourth grade centered around writing and editing their responses. Um, going in and combining sentences, using different words, um, adding, deleting, combining ideas. Um, and the way that's tested is they will, we do have extended responses where they are actually writing, but then they will also give them um, which one of these samples would be the best, you know, of how to combine this sentence or choose a different word. So, um, not only are they writing on their own, but they're also seeing that in a format where they have to make some comparisons of different answers. And then in fifth grade, um, our first three assessments, the first one had to do with their personal narrative. Um, I loved hearing from one of our teachers and she said, that was one of the best ways I got to know about my kids because she was hearing their stories, um, through their, uh, their lens. And so that was kinda, that was an exciting time to hear about that. Um, the next one was on the Renaissance and then the last one was on early American civilizations. Um, again, we're testing those reading skills through those topics. Um, we were, you can see our scores, ninety-eight, one hundred and one hundred, um, after that cycle. I did wanna let you know that in fifth grade, our strengths right now are lying in using text evidence again, so they are honing in on that to support an appropriate response and then also using context clues to figure out unfamiliar words. There has been a lot of vocabulary through, um, the Blue Bonnet curriculum. Great vocabulary, some rich, thick, um, words that they may not have seen before. Um, but they are learning to use some of these words they haven't seen before, just using their context clues, so. So that's where we're at, at Dodd. Any questions?
Ms. Bowles, help me understand this. Um, sorry, I'm, I'm still trying to figure all this out, right?
You're fine.
The seventy percent achievement.
Yes.
Do we ever see the breakout of what the actual grades are? Who got the seventies? Who got the eighties? Who got the nineties?
Yes.
Does that come at some point in the year? Or is it second half of the year? How, how, how do we, how do we see how they're really?
Are you asking how you see that or how I see that?
Uh, it's, well, that's, that's. So let me, let me kind of expand on that. So like, we look at school ratings, for example. They're not looking at the seventy percent mastery, are they?
No, they are not.
So, in terms of that, whether that's how you guys look at it internally, however, however that comes to fruition, where we're seeing how the school will be graded, when do we start to see the breakout? You know, do we have ninety percent at seventy and we really do have a problem here? Do we just have a few, you know, I'm trying to gauge, um.
Yeah, how does this compare to STAR? How does it compare at the end of the year? Is that what you're asking?
That and how do, when do we ever get to see kind of really where the kids are coming in, where the majority of your kids are coming in in that seventy, eighty, ninety percent?
You know, we are looking, we look at two things. So the first thing that we are looking at is the data that we can pull out of Edge of Korea, which is where our, those assessments go into that data system. We can pull it out by grade. We can pull it out by every standard that they're measured by. Um, and then when STAR, um, goes, seventy is at the meets and masters level. So, on STAR, if you are looking at a passing standard, you're looking more in the forty percent range of.
So you are seeing what is reported to the board when you look at a campus rating? You're seeing a higher level.
Yes, so when we wanna focus on our kids being at seventy, that's because we want our kids at the meets and masters level on STAR. Um, if we are measuring them at forty percent, that, that's not good enough. You know, we, we feel like that if we are, if we are pushing our kids to be at the meets level, it brings everybody up. And so, you know, this is after some reteaching and so when you look at the first initial go on a, on an aligned assessment, we are going to take the kids that are not at seventy percent, make sure that we understand what they've missed and then help them get there. And so that's what you're seeing. When you see a hundred percent, you're seeing those kids, um, that have mastered that after reteaching um, and that we feel comfortable moving on from there. But if you are looking at just STAR scores, forty percent is passing. And then about seventy to seventy-five is in the meets category, um, eighty-five is where we shoot for, for masters, so.
So I guess, thank you for explaining that. So I guess, when, when we're, when we're setting the expectation for the seven. So I guess, thank you for explaining that. So I guess when, when we're, when we're setting the expectation for the seventy percent, technically, by, by the state, anything forty percent and above is acceptable. What is our target? And does it, does it change by grade, like what's, what percentage, obviously a hundred is great.
Yep.
But we're at least shooting for eighty, at seventy percent, where, where is kind of that?
Sure, if you, and, and I'm gonna go back to the STAR's uh standards. Those standards are different at every grade level and at every test. So if third grade, um and they change yearly because it may change up to, you know, a point here or a point there. So if I am looking at, and that's why we are, we are shooting for seventy, because if you are at a seventy, you're gonna be guaranteed to be not only approaches or passing, you're gonna be up in the meets category. Um and those are kids who are meeting the standards that are preparing them for the next grade level. Um and so, you know, if, I mean, I could sit down with you, I have a chart that tells us, you know, exactly what the scores they have to have to be in each of those categories. Um but we don't, don't only look at that, we look at their growth measures too, you know, from one year to the next. How are they doing on STAR one year to the next year um as well, so.
No, that's right.
I don't know if I'm answering your questions or giving you too much information.
No, it's more, I'm, I'm trying to distract my head from how this is all done. So if you were to, I won't hold you this, if you're gonna make a guess at where, what percentage of the kids are meeting the seventy percent on the first go around? Is it like half the kids and then we're having to retrain the other half? Or I guess would that be win time, or how do you get to?
So we go through win time and we go through, if it's, if, if we have some standards that are really low across the board, they're reteaching that and spiraling those back into other lessons. The thing about ELR is it does spiral over and over. And so when I say that um we are strong in our text evidence right now, they've heard that from every lesson so far. Um and so, you know, those are things, ballpark figure, you know, fifty percent, sixty percent, you know, mastering that at the first go around, that's not uncommon for any assessment or anything that happens in a classroom, not just in ELR. We're talking math, science, you know, those subjects as well. Um and so you look at where those, those deficits are and then we pull in those groups during win time or reteach during another lesson.
And would you say these assessments are better in the Blue Bonnet curriculum versus past curriculums? Are we kind of where we've always been, or are we, are you seeing, and it's early, obviously, but are, are you seeing any substantial gain or benefit based on this point in the year versus yours prior?
I don't know that it's that different. Um what I think about, you know, Blue Bonnet, it's different than what we've taught in the past. And so, but as I said, every, I feel like that learning curve, people are feeling more comfortable in settling in um to the stand, you know, to what that's at in the situation.
Yep, perfect, thank you ma'am.
Yeah, of course, any other questions?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Thank you ma'am.
Any else?
Thank you Ms. Bowles.
You could almost work for TEA, give a rundown of the accountability, stand like.
I wanna add, I think there's some things, yes it is, that you're looking for, but we'll come with an interim also. So as we take interims next week, you're gonna find, interims are benchmarks. So those are from the STAR program, you take them in the same program and it comes out the same way. And it looks like you've got a breakdown of approaches, meets and masters. So ours are different, it is with seventy percent mastery. But when we take interims, we look at those different categories and it looks more like STAR. I think we're gonna present that data possibly in December, we typically do, that will look more like what the STAR numbers look like.
Based off of those STAR passing rates that are not always seventy?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So will this be the first like benchmark that we do for the year, take a look at the, and do you do, what do you do?
Yes, yes, first.
One in November, one in February.
And then into your test?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And then, as far as seventy percent, when you're looking at a test and you're looking to see who passed and what you're gonna reteach and how you're gonna do it. When we do that in DDI, we're pulling it up with the standards. So when I'm looking at the standards with my team, I've got the ready-made standards and the highly tested standards, we know what they are. So I'm looking to see what standard is not at seventy percent. And then if you think that standard and refine and reteach. Because you'll find that maybe your passing percent is at fifty, but when you go through the standards, you've got some that are at seventy-five, at ninety-five. So you can celebrate when you break it down like that. And then you're like, ooh, y'all, this standard was at forty percent. But you'll find that that hadn't been directly taught yet, it's ongoing, ongoing, directly taught in the next unit. So there's a reason for that, so you can come back for it. So really, the seventy is even scaled down even more. And then as far as Blue Bonnet goes, I think that these assessments are better on our end. I think before we had something like, we didn't have something to provide by that, because we were creating those. And so we were using, you know, old stars and pulling things, our coaches were making those. So this is something that's like, here's what we're doing, here's exactly what we're gonna give you. So it makes more sense, um as far as assessments.
Perfect.
Sorry, I'm very, very quiet.
I'm not gonna be quiet, I'm not gonna be quiet. Keep your thought aside, thank you.
And aligned, like those assessments are aligned, so what's being taught, which when you're pulling from all these different resources, you can risk being unaligned and then your assessments aren't valid, and so this is, makes it all.
It makes sense. Okay, so I have my third grade ELR up here, you will see, me on the microphone. Um you will see that, we did a couple of different things with reteaching, like Tricia said, this is after a reteach. So on the first one, they all went over that together, um they all practiced that, they all ended up doing well, they all ended up passing it after the reteach. The second one, we tried to give it a little bit more rigor, tried to pass it back, they retaught in small groups and they retook the same thing. So I have a lot of sixties on that, but the seventies, the highest they could make was a seventy on the reteach. So we realized, don't not do that again, we made a mistake there. However, they were still retaught, they were just, I had twenty-two kids that had sixty or higher. It was the way it was graded that they couldn't get higher than a seventy on that reteach. When we came back to the next one, we did it a little bit differently, we retaught the standards that needed to be retaught and then we gave a similar assessment using the same story, we used some AI to use a story but asked different questions that were the same standards. So we're trying to find a way to make sure that um what you're seeing is how they're performing too, so this is us trying different things. Um my third grade, they have some standards that went up as we moved along, A fixes went up, their text evidence is strong, like Tricia said. Um when looking at last year's unit three, our scores have already doubled. Um third grade is working on pacing practice, so as they're working, they're talking through things like, okay, you should be finished with number one now, let's look at number two because kids are taking a long time to take these. And it really doesn't take that long. So we're working on testing skills and strategies while they're working on the concepts as well. Um they're doing a lot of guided discourse, we're discussing the format of test questions, just those kinds of things. But kids that are in third grade haven't experienced before and need to learn too. Yeah, so I don't expect another one like that, but.
There it is.
So would that be, I'm sorry, would that be an example of two was on something that's actually they're really gonna hit in six that you were mentioning earlier?
Um two looks like when we did the reteach, so she gave the assessment, there was like, they didn't do very well and it was a hard one, they were at like twenty-seven. So when she retaught it, she brought them all back to her table and she retaught in small groups. And then they all went independently, took the same assessment again, so the highest grade they could make was a seventy. Versus using something else to test that standard, does that make sense? So then it wasn't, our seventy wasn't very high, because that was the highest they could make, versus seventy to a hundred.
Sure.
Yeah, that's what happened there. Um, okay. On fourth grade, um they were at eighty-nine percent on unit two and eighty-five percent on unit three. They did well with multiple meaning words and inferencing on the first, or that was a big improvement from unit one. So out in unit two, those are the things they grew on. Um they were working on text evidence and they were using two questions to discuss with students. These teachers are pulling them and working on the lowest performing standards with a small group. And then those who failed terribly were pulling them to work through that whole test, so they kind of do it different ways. Um on ELR three, they improved on retelling, paraphrasing and summarizing, they did well with interaction with characters. Um and then we wanna see inferencing of plot elements go up, but we know that it's gonna be taught again in units five and unit six, so it's coming back up. Those are things we're gonna keep watching. Um during this DDI meeting, my teachers were like, you should see this with the STAR numbers. I have five kids that have, only five that haven't moved up a s- a level or a color. So we are looking at it in different ways. Um and then in this meeting too, my ELR team asked to meet and visit each other's classrooms because they could see each other's strengths, so I thought that was cool. We're gonna spend some time having them watch each other teach. Um this is a strong team, they were able to get a reading distinction for our campus last year, so I think it would be good for them to see each other again. Um, unit five, this is fifth, or sorry, fifth grade, not unit five, one, two and three, we're at a hundred, a hundred and eighty-six. Um so you can see we're kind of tweaking things and how we're reteaching and what that looks like. Um students again did well with word meaning and puns, they were struggling with figurative language and punctuation. Um after unit two, we started pulling in some comprehension questions that we were making to go with the units, to practice these type of questions throughout. So the teachers felt more comfortable practicing test-taking skills throughout the units, our instructional coaches have been really helping with that. Um in unit three, they did really well with grammar and sentence structure, text evidence went up from forty-one percent in unit two to seventy-six percent in unit three. So that's the kind of things that I'm looking at, that specific standard. Um. Out of this conversation, we started talking about our fifth grade um CERs or extended responses and we kind of organically calibrated how they were grading. And so as they were talking about, well, I would've given that a three, I would've given that a two. Then we were able to talk through that rubric and what that looks like and how we would grade. Um and actually went back and checked some together. So that was nice coming out of that meeting. Um that's what I have.
Thank you Ms. Futt.
Yeah.
Like Tricia and Macy both said, the conversations in DDI and these internalization meetings is so rich and so helpful.
I'm sorry, what is DDI?
DDI's are data meetings, we're looking at all these aligned assessments and, and breaking down those standards with our teams. Um so we've been sitting in on internalization meetings, listening to those conversations and then seeing it finish up with the DDI meeting. It's great just to hear, it creates great conversation on the campus, but also across the campuses. I hear teams say a lot of times, so I talked to Dyer and I talked to Dodd and they're doing this, so I think just the alignment and the conversation is, is so good. Um so this is our third grade, uh they're working, as you can see, kind of dipped down on that second one. But they're working on main idea and supporting details and then text features. Um they're also really getting into writing and spending time building those writing skills. They were so complimentary of our sec- our second grade team, we really worked hard for second grade to build in technology skills last year. Um and they're seeing the benefits of that with third grade being more ready to take those tests and having some stronger test-taking strategies and skills with the technology. So ninety percent on that third one is about the human body, they're so excited about the content, it is so exciting to see them excited about the content. Um and I think the teachers are enjoying that too. Fourth grade, again, uh with just the second and third, first one was inventions, the second one was uh contemporary fiction. The kids are enjoying the content, they felt like these scores were more reflective of their skills. So they're really able to hone in on those skills, they're working on theme and relationships and story elements, which requires a little bit of inferencing, which is something that is recurring and they're always working on. They are working on really using the resources, using the dictionary when they're test-taking and using their accommodations and combinations, so. Fifth grade is really.
On that previous one, it was missing the first one?
Yes, that's the same as they had on, on our fourth grade, there were some problems with the first uh aligned assessments, we, we didn't include that.
Okay, okay, sorry, is that, okay.
Yes. Um, fifth grade is doing a great job, they're really building confidence, which I'd love to hear, those kids are, are doing a great job. Their writing is improving, they've added, like Macy said, added more comprehension questions throughout the lessons to kind of give them a quicker review and to, to hit some of those skills before they get to the assessment, so they're really working hard there. Um again, just the conversation it creates is, is so rich and so good.
Thank you Ms. Stupka.
That's interesting for me to hear, uh because as I'm listening to them talk about uh the concepts that they're, they're recording on, um they're actually, the, the spiral that they're talking about is gonna spiral into what I share with you too. Um we've always seen that with math, our district has been really aligned with terms to, um math instruction, you can walk into one classroom and you see it as it evolves through the years, they're all doing it around the same time, just at a different level. And um I don't think we've heard that with ELR before, so that, that's the first time I've, I've noticed that, so. Um let's talk about it. So sixth grade, um sixth grade ELR, um is doing, doing well. They are uh currently, so when you talk about nouns, capitalization, punctuation at the middle school level, you think, really? What are, they know how, they have punctuation noun and noun, they have uh capitalization, they should know they're not yet. But it's just at a different level of, of expectation. So now we're looking for more consistency um with editorial processes. So we're looking for that to be everywhere and the depth of what they're doing consistent with um proper nouns and um maybe uh different writings, um professional writings, you know, they're, they're looking at different things that they haven't been exposed to before. Um so the depth just increases like everything else. Um so they did, they did well um on the first one, talked about that. Um the second one was uh over drama, so it dipped a little bit because drama is an area that they don't have quite as much exposure to, exposure to. And the teachers didn't teach specifically as much with drama, they did more fiction with this uh unit and assessed more on the drama, so they, they reflected on that and actually eighty-three percent and that isn't, isn't so terrible. Um and then ninety-nine percent on uh the ghost novel and just like Tricia said, Ms. Bowles said, about the seventy percent, it's, it's ninety-nine percent, it's gotta set here, so it's the same, same.
What is a ghost novel?
It is, it's a story, it's a novel that they are, it's called Ghost.
Oh, that's.
It's the title, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, that's what the teachers named it and how it got pulled in here.
They should be really good at drama, it runs pretty thick in the middle school, doesn't it?
No kidding.
They should be what they'd excel at.
Uh yes, they, they are good at that. Um alright, so then seventh grade uh took a little dip. The expectations for writing increased significantly in seventh, so um they're working on similar concepts, just again at deeper levels. Um seventy-six percent of the kids who were retested got a seventy or higher on this first one. Um the second one, they were writing a free verse poem and so poetry is always a little more challenging. Um but they were also, here's where figurative language comes in to play at the middle school. Um it's a struggle, it's, continues to be something that they're constantly spiraling. Um but that, that is what they are doing. And when they retaught, they retaught that one at eighty percent. So um it's just, sometimes it's shoring at the edges, you know, they, they get through their unit, everybody's trekking along, building on prior knowledge, but maybe they, um a lot of times it's, it's a reteach over something that they, the depth of what the teacher's looking for on the assessment wasn't accomplished on that first assessment and they just need uh to go back and look at it again because so much of it is just spiraling at a greater depth. Uh si- the sixty percent on uh two point one was uh plot diagram and um they struggled with terms and the application, so this is being pulled into the next test. So we don't have a reteach on this yet, it will naturally fit into the next unit and I'll report on that next time. The eighth grade, oh, sorry, I'm out of order. Alright, so um one point one, retaught at uh ninety-two percent uh for the students who needed a reteach. So it might not be a whole class reteach, um but the ones who didn't do well will have an opportunity to be retaught in all, all of the subjects and classes um to reteach for a, a greater depth of understanding. Um the, it's sixty-three percent here on one point three is also figurative language. So we're spiraling it consistently, that is one that just trips them up um in every grade, I think. Uh they are also editing drafts, um using conventions on this assessment and uh both will spiral. Um they actually spiraled into the next test and they'll continue to do that until they feel like the students have a good mastery of um of what the teachers are expecting on these. Um they uh, on the, the one that was seventy-nine percent, two point one, that was identifying uh the controlling idea or thesis with text evidence, so elementary talked about that as well. But now we're looking at how um the defining moments in the literature uh changed the story or changed the character's um role in the story. So uh again, just a greater depth, also continuing um to be retaught, just a different, different um genres of literature. And then we go into social studies, our eighth grade social studies did, did well. Um first one was over exploration, they did great. Um the second one is at eighty percent is over colonization and that was the, the area that tripped them up was um the practices of the colonial regions, economic practices of the colonial regions. economic practices of the colonial regions. So, uh, when they re-taught, forty-two percent of the students who needed to be re-taught scored a seventy or higher. So, um, then in American Revolution, that's the third one. Um, that's the one that they they struggled the most with. And in that assessment, they were analyzing for evidence within, um, within the written source. So they're they're analyzing. So just different different depths again. Um, so they struggled with context clues and vocabulary there. Um, and when they retested, seventy pers- seventy-two percent of the students between both classes, between both teachers, we have two history teachers for eighth grade this year, um, retested at a seventy percent or higher. And then the Constitution, um, they were comparing and contrasting historical documents. That's for those that struggled with that, it was the comparison of historical documents. So. Do you have any questions? Mr. Martinez?
I do. It's a few minutes, so I'll table them for now.
Okay.
I'm I'm writing them down, so we'll start with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that Mr. Vonsu is making his way up, but it's just evident in what you're saying that through your DDI meetings, you're looking at those sta- those standards. And when you're saying you're spiraling them back through, like you're not reteaching that whole test. You're looking at those standards. You're focusing on those tight areas and then circling those back. And like you said, readiness standards, like those highly tested standards and focus. And so it's evident in what you're saying that those cycles are happening happening. So I appreciate everyone here understanding that learning is a function of time and that these cycles are happening where your teaching and learning is happening, your assessment's happening, feedback to students is happening. And you can hear all of that. And then not only are we giving that feedback and clarifying misunderstandings, but then we're giving them the opportunity to retest and demonstrate that learning mastery that has happened over time in all of those cycles. So just thanks for your intentionality. Thanks for the detail that you're doing in your data digs with your staff. And even on the classroom walks, like I saw at the high school, the data wall in the back of a math classroom. So I know that that detailed data is at the forefront of y'all's conversations daily. So that's evident in what you're saying. And so thank you so much.
So I'll second what Casey said. Uh, but since you spoke, I'll go ahead and say what was going through my head. So if we are talking about spiraling, right, and what they learn in sixth grade should lead into what they're gonna learn in seventh and eighth. When y'all look at these scores, do you look at how that class did the year prior? And are they, okay, so yes, we do look at that. And is there like a, we expect you to get ten percent better, twenty, you know, what is kind of the?
So we have those conversations with the students. And and those are conversations where teachers are having them, administrators are having them, and it's really focused on growth. So we're looking at individuals and you want each individual to make progress. So somebody may have be capable of growing much more in ten percent. But when we focus on the individual child as teachers and a district, then we're gonna see that needle move so much quicker because, um, our our focus is on making sure that each student maximizes their potential and and is as successful as they can be. So to blanket it with, yes, we always do a, we have a generalized goal that overall we'd like to see this percent improve. Um, but really, it comes down to the the most important part, that's looking at what we think each individual student can do. And so we're having this conversation with the kids, how do you want to do that on that? What could you have them to, um, to score higher on that assessment? Um, having vanity self-reflection and not just with the assessment, but in all of the things.
And growth is a big piece of accountability as well. When we were at the third grade campus, that made a big impact on us and the improvement too. We have to do goal-setting meetings with my students today. And for the fifth graders, they look at what they scored on third and fourth grade score. We talked about endurance being a stepping stone, that you need to move up every time. Growth is the biggest piece of all of us. It's not where they are currently, it's where we need to be next.
We also have a software that that shows our state behaviors for.
Project.
So would that software identify a child for you that tell you, hey?
It tells you, here's where that student is. And according to accountability, it, that student needs to be here for them to meet that growth measure. And then that's gonna look different.
You can have a student give you a tick mark in a in growth and didn't pass the test.
Yes. So I could have not passed.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. And then the same thing where our high achieving students, and that's that's the thing. It's like they're supporting, they're intervening with students, but they're also extending for other students because we lose a point for accountability if a student who is high achieving actually declines. So we're bringing every individual student up.
And we actually added advanced history this year for everything where you've had. We added that because we wanted to make sure that, you know, we're, history, it was an area that we're focused on. And so making sure that our high students do continue to have opportunities to be challenged at the level that they deserve to be challenged. And then leaving space for that teacher who really hyper-focus on the students who might need a little extra support and not spending the time of the students who doesn't need that. Um, trying to make sure each kid has, and each teacher has a.
Sure. Thank you.
So learning is a function of, um, I think that just gives me.
Sorry.
No, it's it's great. It just.
Right to your question, Doc.
Um, no, I I I'll answer anything you got. But you know, at the end, high school is where they finish. Uh, you've heard everyone starting and then to the middle and then high school. Uh, and everything they do is supposed to help them be productive citizens. Uh, so when they're sitting in English class, uh, talking about inferencing, uh, looking through the teaks. So what you see right here, foreshadowing, the neck that's gonna give, Magi, Animal Farm. Um, our teachers are, those are the tests that they took to see how good their inferencing skills were. Uh, the author's craft response, uh, being able to understand, um, what's coming next without it being plain sad. Um, and you know, you want it to be a hundred percent. Uh, but it's the beginning of school. After summer, uh, kids don't do a lot of studying nowadays. Uh, and so they come with some gaps and we're working to make sure we're guiding them to, uh, the space that we need them to be at. Uh, with tutorials, with them coming in, with spiraling. Um, and so that was English one. Then we look at English two. Um, in English two, specifically in all of English, you're seeing a lot of writing. Uh, it's writer heavy and, uh, it's beyond us. Kids don't like to write. Um, they want to talk, which is good, but to be able to put down your words is a skill that we're having to go through. Takes time to write. And with the phones being on, uh, kids are writing more. Uh, and so what we see in here is specifically, we want them to write effective, short, constructive messages. Uh, and so when you're looking at all three themes, that's specifically what all they were doing, uh, unit one, unit two, unit three. Uh, the E O C for us is writing heavy, uh, reading heavy, but writing as well. Uh, and so when you look at that, we we weren't, we went downhill because they're getting tired of writing. And so we have to spiral that in. And so what you're seeing is we're breaking the teaks into targetable, specific components. Okay, let's write about, um, let's write about pre-writing. Well, what's pre-writing? Well, right after fox. Uh, let's put it all down. Let's make sure we know what we're gonna write before we write. Let's brainstorm real heavy, the basics. All the things you used to do in school, we're going back to that. And it's in high school, what they're doing in middle school and in, uh, elementary, we're doing the same thing here. Focus on the academic vocabulary, um, using the format to assessment to monitor some of the same things you've heard. And as we broke it down, we're seeing kids get it. Now, this is the percentage that they're at, sixty-eight, which is which is good. Uh, you want a hundred percent, but this is reflective of what E O C looks like for this specific unit as it relates to writing. Um, and so we're we're on pace to be where we wanna be, uh, but we're not done because we got a lot more units ahead of us. When you look at U S history, uh, U S history specifically, when you start at the Gilded Age, you're highlighting, uh, the the transformative days, the invention of the light bulb, the boring stuff. Uh, and and I mean, I I I fell asleep during this part in class. And so, uh, I'm not saying the kids are, but it's reflective of that. But when you start getting into the progressive era where you're talking about political corruption, promoting direct democracy, kids are, uh, kind of like that because they can relate to what they see in politics and whatnot. And so you see that it goes up to eighty-six percent. Uh, when they take their third test, you, they're talking about the Spanish-American War and World War One. Uh, does you focus specifically on imperialism between the Spanish-American War and the acquisition of the territories? And when we're talking about U S history, our teachers do a really good job not making it just election. Um, because that's that's what I got when I was in school. They try to make it, uh, project-based, uh, talking to each other, creating, researching, looking out different things. And when you, when you see a little bit of that collaboration amongst students, a lot more learning is happening when it's hands-on specifically to that. Uh, and then, uh, and the the last test that they took was over the roaring twenties. Pretty much the students explored the post-World War, World War One, examining the U S economy, how it grew from the industrial advances from Henry Ford's assembly. And so as as she's going, they're going through these, uh, specific examples of roaring, they they can see the relation to today. Uh, and so history, although it starts off boring for them, which I mean, is it, you can see the fifty-six percent, um, it becomes more interactive because they can see the different components of what, uh, history looks like today and how it's related. And our teachers do a really good job making sure that the connectivity is there. Um, but once again, to to talk about the Gilded Age is always gonna be long and drawn. Uh, but, uh, our teachers are up to doing things to help get students, uh, involved and excited about it. But, you know, once again, the the Gilded Age is boring. Let's be honest. Uh, but they're they are learning. That's the last one for me. Question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vonsu. We appreciate all y'all giving the your data reports. We need to, we do need to to approve our audits, so let's go back to eight A dot three. If we have a motion.
I moved to approve the audits, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five report I submitted.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Is there any further discussion? Not all of us in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion passes. All right. I think Ms. P- Ms. Liz Pajita has a special program for us tonight, right? You're the guinea pig of a new program we're doing at board meetings.
New practice.
Rubra, my E L, I'm a bilingual, so if you're just not the first one, we're gonna go with that. All right. So, um, as you know, bilingual students are those who are identified as non-proficient in English, who have speak a language other than English at home. Um, here I've got a little collection of what languages are spoken across the district. To no surprise, Spanish is the predominant first language that's spoken by most of our E B students. English is also a language. The second one is, it's mostly spoken by our E B students. And then all the others are pretty much sprinkled amongst the other language, uh, campuses. Dire, you've got just English and Spanish. So I just think it's a, it's really neat to see where where the languages we have.
It's amazing.
As far as E B students, we have a lot. We are currently sitting at four hundred and twenty-seven students today. Um, historically, we usually grow about thirty students, E B students, a year from where we end with previous year. So I'm estimating that we'll probably end up close to like four fifty this year. If we break it down by campus, you can see here where we all are E B students, where they specifically sit at. So Hansel, out of their five hundred and twenty-four students, three twenty-three of those are E B students. Dire has four hundred and thirty-three students, uh, three hundred and forty-three students, ninety-one of those are E B students. Daw has forty-three E B students, A M S eighty-four, they're five hundred and seventy-seven are Mykrosos. And then, um, High School has eighty-six of those, seven hundred and ninety-six students as E B students. And then if we break it even further by grade level, um, the blue here are active E B students. So these students that are have not yet reclassified or identified as E B students. The red are those who have reclassified. They're in their first or second year, uh, post-reclassification, so they've exited. They're no longer identified as E B students. But we continue to monitor these kids through the L P A C. We meet on them, make sure that they're progressing, doing well academically. And then those that you see in yellow, um, these are students that we just keep track of them through P E M's. They're in their third plus year after reclassification. There's a lot of them telling you. And then if we look at the different program outlets, where these kids are actually sitting at, uh, fourteen are one-way dual-language students. These are, um, students at Da- uh, not Dire, Hansel, who have Ms. Morrison, who are actually sitting, um, have a bilingual certified teacher. Uh, the hundred and sixty-eight students that are identified in P E M's as alternative bilingual, these are students who would be in a bilingual certifi- uh, in a bilingual classroom, but we don't have a bilingual certified teacher. Uh, two hundred and seventeen students are in E S L classrooms. This is pre-K through fifth, uh, through twelfth grade. Um, fourteen, we have fourteen students that are coded alternative to E S L. This is at the high school. We have one teacher that is not yet E S L certified, um, and she is their E L A R teacher. And then fifteen students are denied, parent denied all services. Um, speaking of the, having that alternative bilingual and alternative E S L, um, identified students are sitting in that, um, P E M's. Uh, we did have to file another waiver, except bilingual exception and E S L waiver. So for the bilingual exception, we do have filed for forty-one teachers, which of those hundred and sixty-eight teachers are students pre-K through fifth grade. Um, that is across all three camp, uh, elementary campuses. Again, we're unable to file, find and hire bilingual certified teachers that will stick around long enough. Um, and then we do have that one E S L waiver for that one teacher at the high school who's serving those fourteen students. She's not yet eligible to take the E S L test. Um, this is an increase on the bilingual exception. We did have twenty-nine teachers prior year and then the year pre- previous to that, we had ten teachers. So, um, there was an increase, one with the realignment of the elementary campuses, um, that did create that increase from the ten to the twenty.
How many E S L certified teachers do we have?
Um, a lot, but as far as, um, the high school, um, we're looking at the E S L for the E L A R teachers. So in order for the, for secondary, we have to have the very minimum, they have to have the E S L, E L A R teacher be E S L certified for them to be under a, an E S L program.
Oh, okay.
So although we may have math teachers and science teachers, which is great, it's that E L A R teacher that we're looking at. And then if we look at telepos, um, the growth from twenty-four to twenty-five school year, um, you can see we did have, um, an increase especially in the intermediate and advanced levels. Uh, there was a decrease in that advanced high. I did speak to a lot of our, this is a lot of our seniors who realized, you know what, the last year, if I don't pass this, I'm done. So, um, when we were doing those end-of-year L P A Cs, we did have several students that were not, um, they're, they've, they're pretty much worn out. They've been doing it since they were in kindergarten. Um, and then we did have one student that did not test last year. Um, that was actually my child who were out of the country that day. So, um, he'll be good. He'll be there this year, prompts.
From the other room.
Yeah. And then as far as professional development and parent outreach programs, these are some of the things that we did last year. Uh, every year we have an annual L P A meeting for all district staff. Um, we did an interpreting and translating training for the bilingual pairs. Um, we did some E L, Els sta- uh, resources, elevation strategies. This is a software that's all teachers are, have available. Uh, we do approximately every two weeks or so, uh, E B strategies and you just let her goes out.
Is that K, K twelve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Has it differentiated us? I'm sure it is. It's, or is it?
No, it's strategies that can be used across the board, um, for all grade levels. And then we created last year a bilingual resource hub. Um, we also taught, you know, do individualized teacher support. And then last year, Dire did create a bilingual club.
Mm-hmm.
So that was really fun. We're implementing that at Hansel this year. And then as far as peak to parent outreach events, we did have, um, we have currently a Facebook page where we, um, post a lot of things and translate that, a lot of the emails and different events that are going on in the district just so parents can have that in Spanish as well. Um, we did a training that just really talking about diff- sharing different resources that are available to parents. Um, we did another training to focusing on all the different acronyms that are out there in education and specifically what they all need. Um, we also partnered with U N T to do a college readiness training. And then we also send out those T E A family newsletters that, um, they send out, we send those to families.
What is your participation like for some of those community?
Um, so for like the U N T readiness one, I know we had about twenty families last year. Um, then we have some of the others that don't always have, I have about five to ten people sometimes show up, um, sometimes one, but that's still.
Yeah.
That's still group one, you know, obviously.
And you're leading all of them?
Yes.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Any questions other than Mr. Martinez over here? Just kidding.
I do have one. Um, so you said there were fourteen kids who were one-way. They only speak, uh, Spanish, correct?
Hmm.
Is that what that means?
So it is a, the one-way program is a bilingual program that we have. So it's, um, they have a bilingual certified teacher. They're speaking both English and Spanish in the classroom. That's pre.
It's one way in the classroom, but English classroom.
Correct.
Can you say that again, I'm sorry?
It's, it's a one-way because they're only in the Spanish classroom with their teacher. If it would have their English counterpart, it would be a two-way.
But those are all, right, all those kids.
The, the two-way, so the two-way would be if we have English students learning Spanish and Spanish students learning English, um working with a, with two teachers, or it can be one teacher, that's what would be the two-way. The one-way means it's only Spanish-speaking students, in this case, so that's our primary language, and they're learning English.
So would that be all Ms. Morrison's class, or are they sprinkled in?
Nope, that's all Ms. Morrison's class.
So by the time they leave or get into kindergarten first grade, she's pre-K, they have.
They, mm-hmm. They get sprinkled throughout currently is what we're doing, and that's, those are those alternative bilingual students who would ideally be with a bilingual certified teacher and moving through their elementary education.
You know, just the other day, Mr. Peta was saying, I don't really have enough to do.
Uh, yeah, clearly.
And so we're trying to think, you know, I, I say this every year, I feel silly that it's publicly recognizing you one time, but you, you're more than the backbone of a program, you're the heart. So you, you put your full self into it, and the kids are better because of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. She connects with those students.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's true, all the time, she does so much with it for years. And we reach out to her for everything, she got essentially a whole campus that is first, four hundred and twenty kids, she does it for appropriate.
Four hundred and twenty-seven a year. About four seventy-five, we, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peta.
Ask Mr. Butler to come up and present tonight in my superintendent's communication. Um, one of the things he's been working on and keeping an eye on, we, with recent legislative selections, changes, we've had different requirements. And sometimes you guys get information sent to you as board members. Uh he's been working on this for a while, but recently there was a newsletter, or a news briefing set out. Uh one of the new requirements is to look at your campus's certi- certified teacher in the core areas. And so the state has been, media has been putting various reports around from the state's perspective because some districts are in a, in a, in a real pinch. Um so a couple of months ago, uh he, he said, I'm, I'm starting to put together a plan uh and identify where we are here in Crum, because this is a product of a DOI, District of Innovation uh certification piece across the state of Texas, that they're now saying, hey, that's no longer the spot where you can get these, you can put in a teacher, they're gonna have to come back with a certification. So now you have a time period to do it. So I asked him to give a ten thousand foot view, just so you know where we're at and what we're up against uh over the next two years.
Okay, so uh this, I'm gonna give you an overview of House School Two, how that affects DOI and just kind of an overview of where we're at in comparison to uh readiness for the new change and comparison to the other people in the state. Alright, so just to look at the certification trends, I got this off the TE, uh TEA training webinar that I went to. And what you'll see over the course of this eleven-year period is at the top, the uncertified red, it keeps expanding. The two traditional certified blue, and then your alternative certified is shrinking. So where does that ended up, put us in twenty-four, twenty-five, that's where you get the headlines of the majority of new teachers hired last year that were new to the profession were not certified in terms of even through an alternative uh method. And so that number stuck at fifty-five percent. So part of the results of that was uh a look at how the state is using District of Innovation provision, uh some changes come out of House School Two. So specifically, what it said is an update to the District of Innovation provision is that a person may not be employed as a teacher, teacher intern, or teacher training librarian, educational aide, administrator, educational diagnostician, school counselor by a school district unless that person holds the appropriate certification. Alright, so what is an appropriate certification? And that's defined by the law, is issued by ESPEC, that can be an intern or probationary certificate. Those are the certificates held by your alternative certif- certification pathway, uh teachers, a standard or an enhanced standard. And so the goal is to move everybody to a standard. And it also uh included an emergency permit. So tho- those are generally a one-year certificate. So if you come off an emergency permit, you would want to move to a standard.
Well, how does an emergency permit work? What is an emergency permit?
So emergency permit is something that you apply to for the state. You say, hey, this person doesn't qualify for any of these other type of certificates, this is the number of college hours they may have, and then they grant you a one-year emergency permit. There's various different ways you could obtain that.
Could it be someone moving in from out of state who just hasn't taken a state?
That's a different permit, that would be like a one-year permit. Uh the example we have, you know, that you would have is uh, hey, this person does not have the qualifications to get an intern certificate, but they do have these, these many hours. Essentially, back in, before this changes, you might look at DOI, but we've kind of trended towards putting people on emergency certifications because it's an actual certification, as, as opposed to just, if they're a core subject, we're like a sped teacher or something like that. So it's just something we work out with the state to, this is a qualifications, this is the deficiency plan, this is what we're doing moving forward. And they grant them from time to time, but it's not something you wanna go to on a regular basis. It's generally, you're in a situation where scarcity has put you in that position.
So what happens if they, you get that one-year waiver and they don't meet those requirements?
We don't move on to something else, either an intern certificate or a uh standard certificate. Most of the time it would move into an intern certificate if you're a person that's on an emergency waiver. Uh then you fall into the fifty-five percent of uncertified. Uh and at that point, the district has to make decisions on whether or not to continue to employ you. Uh if you're an emergency certification person, you probably didn't meet DOI qualifications, so it's important that we move along. Uh that's something that we've tried to do in Crum ISD. So this is gonna be limitation, is gonna be phased in over time. So this is the, we found out about it here, twenty-five, twenty-six, districts may maintain currently approved DOI plans, which include the sections under DOI, alright? Uh moving forward to next year, twenty-six, twenty-seven, districts will no longer be able to locally certify through DOI plans K through five teachers in reading and math. So that's next year, so that's something we have to be ready for, twenty-six, twenty-sev- twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Looking beyond that, in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that brings in the addition of the core subjects of science and social studies at the elementary level, where you're not able to do a DOI plan, but also incorporates those four core categories for the secondary level as well, alright? So that's a three-year phase in. So we're looking now, in the, in the, basically the gap year, before this thing starts affecting actually, was where we're at, who we have in these type of situations, and how do we move them forward? Now, of course, the, the original DOI was for CTE, you can still use it for CTE. So districts with appropriate allowable approved exemptions, which we have in our DOI plan, can maintain certific- ser- maintain the flexibility for non-foundation subjects. The biggest example of that would be CTE teachers, industry-related uh experience or college hours. So let's look at certified staff members, this is all staff members, whether they are teaching an elective, a CTE course, or a uh core subject. So overall, in KISD, eighty-eight percent of our teachers are certified through one of the recommended things. So that puts us uh fifty-five percent as a state, we're significantly over that. I think what it shows us is the district has a commitment to hire and move teachers into cert- that are certified and move teachers that are not certified to the certified category over time. But it also shows that we're not completely immune to market conditions that, that you see throughout the state. If we were to look from top to bottom, at Dire, they have ninety-six percent of the teachers are certified according to House School Two standards. At Dodd, it's a hundred percent, and Hansel, it's a hundred percent. And that can vary from year to year. Like if you were to look, Hansel had probably three employees last year, but this year they have none. Uh so the, at the elementary level, we're set up very nicely right now for the transition into next year's standards. So that, I think that's positive, and kudos to the elementary principals for, you know, putting us into that position. Uh at the middle school, eighty-two percent of the teachers are certified to House School Two standards. And at Crum High School, that's seventy-five percent. I think as you see the percentage going down, what you're gonna see is the CTE effect as you move into middle school and high school, for the number of s- staff members that you have DOI certified that are specifically in uh CTE courses. Now that doesn't mean that we don't have things to address in the core subject as well. So if we look at these and turn them in from percentages into numbers, the top line is people that we have that are uh DOI or uncertified in elective, I mean in a core subject. Alright? So that, disregard that elective word right there, in a core subject. So those are the people that we have to have a plan for either next year or definitely by the year after. So overall in the district, you know, we have a hundred and eighty-seven teachers in our district. We have seven of them that we're gonna have to move from uncertified to certified, uh at, because of the statute. Overall, fifteen that are teaching the uh electives or uh a CTE course, for a grand total of twenty-two of our hundred and eighty-seven. So if you look at Dire Elementary, they have one, but that is a person that would not be affected by the change in the law because they are a elective teacher. So if you go right now, Dodd and Hansel are also not being affected by the, the ramifications of next year. If we go to the middle school, we have four that are in what we would consider CTE pathways, and three that are core teachers. So we'll have to develop, and we are developing plans for those teachers as to how we move them in to the certified category according to HB two. At the high school, we have uh, we have four that would be in core subjects, and ten that are in CTE. So what is our plan? So our plan is that we're gonna evaluate, and we have evaluated, the current state of certification in Crum ISD. What we're doing to move the people from point A to point B is partnerships between the teacher that we've hired, the campus administration, central office in an HR role, and also the educator prep program to develop deficiency plans. And all a deficiency plan is, is what is the gap between where they're at now and a standard certification? And so at that point, we look at what the gap is, develop a plan, and then monitor it and uh provide support to that staff member to move from point A to point B towards a standard certification. Uh another key is to retain our current staff. That was a uh, that was a big emphasis and a, and a large reason as to why the elementary's numbers are so good right now in certified staff. They, we did a really good job of being able to keep certified teachers, so therefore we were looking for less teachers, lessening the cha- uh excuse, lessening the chance of having to hire somebody that wasn't completely certified. So I think we also uh need to make sure that we keep in mind, uh for twenty-six, twenty-seven hiring decisions, the HB two, and then also uh continually to look and explore for ways to increase the pool of certified candidate in the future. And I think that's a statewide goal. But uh not exactly a hundred percent of where we wanna be because it's important for us to have a certified teacher in every classroom. Uh but overall, compared to the state, we are in good position to make this transition. Uh I think the district administration, me personally, I think we support uh the you, the, the spirit in what the rem- in what the, what uh HB two's doing. So we're in good, good shape to.
So I think it's good that Butler was able to present that data because the state is, you know, we're not under the skies falling, as some of the articles are depicting. Uh we, we have a controllable platform set with us that we can start building plans for some of the individuals that are in those uh in those gaps that we're now gonna be required to make a plan for. Also wanted to thank, you know, this is one of those things, when I asked Butler to put something together, he'd already been dealing with this data. So I appreciate you being ahead of the curve to help us have the information for the staff to start working with uh as they move into the, the, what they're doing with their staff next year. And then as a board, we're eventually gonna have to go, okay, when we come, when we start putting some of those num- phases with those numbers, where we, we get to that crossroads where a person's not getting certified, we're still gonna have to make decisions. You know, I, I, we're, of how we, how we employ them, or what are the state ramifications? So that i- if, if somebody can't get certified, we, we don't have options anymore.
The decision's gonna be made.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's, it's just. It's not gonna be an option anymore.
We'll have multiple year relationships with those people, and so that's why we're trying to get ahead of that and get them to have a plan, uh prior to.
But I think the key to this is exactly what Dr. Co- Cochran said, there are faces behind these numbers, alright? And there are two faces. There are the kids in that classroom that perform better with a certified teacher, alright? Uh and there are also, there are, uh there is a teacher that we want to take and move them along because it's good for them as well. It, it's good for their career. You know, teachers that attain the certification do better in the long term in the career, and they stay in the career. Uh which is why you have that number of people falling in and out of teaching. So if we can take someone and support them on their journey to be certified, then I think we've left that person better than we found them, and also subsequently, every kid that enters their classroom, whether they're here or elsewhere, so.
After a legislative session, sometimes some of the bigger bills make the news. This is one, like, oh, DOI certifications for core areas, that kind of gets hidden in the news, right? And so you were talking about the faces, have, are they even, sometimes there, people aren't aware of some of these things get, that get kind of
Yeah, I.
put a little bit below, like, are they aware that this bill has come out and that we've gotta make a plan?
Yeah, for some of them, we, some of them, these are conversations that, because we were, we were on this before the bill passed. This is something we were trying to do because it's the right thing to do for people.
For them.
Yeah. So for example, you know, how, how things change over time, used to you would hire an alternative certification. Now person, you hire somebody that's an alternative certification, and you gotta finish their certification before, uh at a certain time. For example, we would sit down with a couple of staff members and go, okay, this is where you're at, you have three modules left, and you have to pass your certification. So then we now partner with the EPP, and IT is one that we use a lot, they work really well with us, uh to the point where they help us develop the uh, the deficiency plan where they have to finish, and it just spells out, you need to do A, B, C, and D. And then at that point, it's working with the principal and, you know, me, because they're monitoring instruction, I'm trying to help them monitor certification so that we're not looking up at some point in April when it's time for, and they haven't done what they've needed to do.
Yeah, and those decisions have to be made.
So those conversations are, we're meeting with people, uh to go, hey, you know, we're gonna have some conversations next month with some staff members to go, hey, remember we talked about this uh plan when we hired you? This is where you're at, this is what we expect by Christmas, uh to accomplish.
This is what the state expects.
Yeah, and this is, this is piggybacking, this is a report for you guys, but he's putting this data for them. So they have this and their, they're, they're, they're using it on their campuses to have those discussions, and he's providing the, the, the research of the programs to say, hey, here's where your person's at, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we pay for the certification programs?
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Teachers pay for it, but, you know, a lot of times whether it's IT, so the, those, those type of programs comes out of their paycheck. But do you remember it's between five and nine thousand dollars?
Yeah, it was pretty much small car payment, so one place is four hundred dollars.
Yeah. It comes out of the paycheck.
That's a pretty big car payment, I mean.
We are attractive.
Yeah, yeah, she, are, are you feeling?
Whoa!
Okay, so the rest, the rest part of my section, and I appreciate you taking time, it seems like a lot of data tonight. If we wanna start in the data presentations over again, we can revisit those.
Oh, yeah, we're good.
But um, a couple of high points that I wanted to visit with, um we talked about the, the final numbers, two, uh twenty-five, seventy-eight was what we turned in. Remember, we looked at a budget off of around uh, uh twenty-six hundred. So we're still a little bit shy there, but we're gonna look at the, the growth that's happening throughout the rest of the year. Hopefully that tips it over the scale. A lot of big numbers people talk about on snapshot there of the high school, we did turn in seven ninety-five. Um and uh.
Says seven ninety-six on here.
Uh this is what we turned on snapshot.
Seven ninety-six?
No, it says seven ninety-five.
Not if you look up, it says snapshot, seven, ten thirty-one, seven ninety.
We turned in with seven ninety-five.
Somebody gave you a bad report.
The, the cutoff was gonna be seven ninety-five, so we didn't wanna move up, and uh, no, it was seventy-five, seven ninety-five on the report.
Solana's played that game a long time, we don't wanna get Solana's name.
Um on, on the construction projects, uh you know, i- if you do get a chance and you wanna holler at me, I love taking a tour of the middle school, um that, that's gonna be continually changing as we kind of accelerate uh and get into the dry. Uh that's a, that's an amazing project going on, it's pretty. It's pretty fun to walk through and, and see some of the changes that are going over there. Um, the CTE center, I had a meeting today where they said, hey, will you be okay if we, uh, call a move-in date at February sixth? I said, I'm not ready to approve that, uh, until I have a conversation with you guys on, uh, as we get approached the dry. What pro- what process have we put in place? Like, for example, if the drywall's going to start here and it's normally a five-day installation, what steps have we done to make it a two-day installation? Uh, if we're just, if I'm just extending it so you don't have to crunch, I don't want to approve the extension.
Thank you.
Um, but as we get through those conversations, you know, just like keeping you aware of the cutoff dates they're talking to me about. So right now, if we do nothing, they're saying February sixth. Uh, hopefully we can still move those dates a little bit forward. Um, there's not a lot of fluff between now and February, so we're still, you can see the phases. It does daily, now it's changing. I mean, it is moving along pretty good, uh, so we should be in the, in the dry here pretty quick. Also wanted to kind of open up the floor a little bit and, and we have completed our first round of campus visits. Um, and I wanted to open the floor, if you guys have any comments, if you had any questions. But I also want to thank the administrators for being vulnerable enough to let us walk through the campuses and come on, come in your buildings. Your kids did a great job, uh, watching the instruction take place. Uh, but from a board member's perspective, being able to say, oh, I've been there, I've seen that, I've seen that class, such a valuable opportunity, uh, when the community's talking to you. So anything on campus visits, uh?
Well, I unfortunately missed the primary school walks, uh, had to be in meetings that day, but got to experience middle and high school this last, earlier this week and, no, last week. It was Monday.
It was this week.
Two days ago.
Yesterday kind of threw me off with the day off. Uh, y'all, some of us had to have. But anyway, super impressive. The kids are incredible. I don't know who picked the kids that did the tours, but they did a great job, uh, very well spoken. Told, knew everything about, were able to answer our questions and, uh, really impressed what's going on at those campuses.
Yeah, I really enjoyed it also. Thank you, and I really enjoyed the band and one of the band halls, that was really special. Dr. Bonzuk, what is the name of the culinary teacher?
Ms. Phillips.
Ms. Phillips. I was impressed with every, how did you get good in middle school, Ms. Boone, I'm sorry. Uh, but the primary, the high school, you know, makes you proud to be in this community, seeing these kids. But I think she is my favorite. She was amazing, loved what she's doing with those kids. We had a conversation about it, so great job, thank you.
I loved the classrooms, um, doing some amazing things with leadership. I mean, yes, there's high quality academics going around all the rooms. Like I said, there were data walls that people were testing out and trying out. You can tell like those academics is a focus. But then to also see that we're developing them as leaders in like a leadership classroom and giving them that opportunity. I chuckled because they were practicing interviews, interview skills. And one little girl said, so how do you handle criticism? And this kid said, I don't listen to it. And I know what he was meaning, like, I'm not going to, you know, like criticism, I'm not going, I'm just going to ignore that. But anyways, it was just funny to listen to them and, um, I even asked the students on the walk to like, hey, how did you get selected by this? Oh, I'm, I'm part of this or my teachers picked or, you know, however that was. It was neat to see that they were recognized as leaders on their campus. And then at the high school, I asked them, do you, do you enjoy walking people around? And a couple of the girls were like, absolutely, I love it's bringing people into the campus and actually getting to meet us. Like, I enjoy getting to meet y'all as y'all are investing in our school. She didn't say investing in our schools, but like y'all who are leading our schools, we like to talk with you as well. Like, they equally were receptive to hearing from us and walking around with us, just as much as they were to like show, show around and showcase their school. And the fashion for the high school girls was on point. Um, they were styling, I mean, all of them, they, they were so professional. And so kudos to just the leaders that you were developing that didn't just show up at the middle school and high school. It started at the elementaries and so.
They were that way when we went to the elementary.
Yeah, see, I missed, yeah, yeah.
They were on point too, without them showing up.
Yeah, kudos, kudos to the, the character that you were building alongside strong academic students. Thank you.
I think the fashion task school, they're trying to keep up with Bonzuk, okay?
Oh.
I think she was saying there's dress code issues.
No.
There probably are, but not.
They had some shoes, man, it was, it was good.
Anything else? That's all I have from my report for tonight.
Alright.
Is the CTE center, it says forty percent complete. Do you think, think that's accurate? I mean, they got the steel and some concrete.
I, I think at the time of that report that came in, uh, Monday of last week is when they sent that report to us, so probably, I mean.
Okay.
They tell us that, I'm not making that, this comes from them.
No, I get it. I'm just like, man, I can't wait till the skin starts going on the building and starts getting dried in, so it's, yeah, let's do it.
So what about, what about principal feedback? From, how does y'all, how do y'all, y'all, you five and your staff feel about the board being there? Because we want them to be excited. We want to be excited we're coming because we want to see the good things that happen. It's not, it's not to be there, we don't want teachers to feel like we're there to critique them, uh, make them nervous.
Good, to say like, oh, the board's coming, great, I want them to come see this, that's, yeah, that's good.
Not, not, not try to hide, but be like, we want them to come to our classroom.
Yeah, come to my classroom.
Very similar to when we started making you guys do data reports. I think it was uncomfortable at first because it was new.
Uh, just at first.
Come on now, Mason.
Just at first.
But y'all are much more polished doing that now than you were a year ago when we started.
I thought y'all were polished from the get-go.
Alright.
Are you still on the CTE center?
No, I was going to my KYCC.
Oh.
Oh, that's, that's next.
Wrong meeting.
I said, you can't leave, we got to.
That happens at midnight.
Alright, we don't have, we don't have any actions on items from closed session, I believe, I don't believe. Policy update one twenty-six.
One twenty-six is rather lengthy, but if you read the first part of that, uh, breakdown at the beginning of those first thirteen pages, it says, this is in compliance with everything that recently, uh, came out of the legislative session. Uh, and then if you ever want to take a look at those, it has, I think there's a handful of pages that gives you an overview. Um, but this wasn't drastically changed, it was changed to compliance with the law. So my recommendation is to, uh, accept one twenty-six as presented from the TASB policy update.
I move that the board add revise or delete local policies as offered by TASB Policy Service for consideration. And according to the instruction sheet for TASB Localized Policy Manual, update one twenty-six.
Motion second, any further discussion? Not all of us in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion passes. Approved the purchase of furniture for the new middle school.
So this was, it's quite a lengthy process. Uh, we talked to several vendors. Uh, Ms. Boone, uh, went and visited, well, did you visit for furniture or just, uh, uh, she visited campus furnitures and then, uh, visited with the vendors individually. They put together mo- models based on the layout that's coming along. Uh, we did land on a company called Meteor, um, and our recommendation, uh, and you see parts of the furniture, they dropped off some samples out in the lobby. There was two different companies that we were comparing, uh, what those products look like, just basic teacher desk chair and so on and so forth. Um, one on the left, is that the one, why does it go out there? I don't know, we'd have to look at it, just, I believe it's the one on the left, maybe. Um, so a couple key.
If it's not the one on the left, it's the one on the right.
If it's not on the left, it's on the one on the right, you know, it is what it is. But, um, it did, we ended up, uh, after spitting forth, came in with a bid, uh, within our budget for one million two hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars, fifty-three cents. Um, if you want furniture, my recommendation is we approve the bid, approve the P.
Are you happy, are you having fun picking out furniture and, yeah, this is so fun. I move to approve the furniture purchase with neater education in amount of one million, two hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars and fifty-three cents for the new middle school as recommended by the superintendent. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion on furniture? Not all of us in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion passes. Consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion second, any further questions on the consent agenda? Not all of us in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion passes. Items for future agendas. Anything, uh, anybody has? We're going to table the KYCC meeting dates until our KYCC meeting. If there's nothing further, we are adjourned, the time is eight fifty. Thank you all for being here tonight.
They're welcome to stay.
Yeah, hey, we're going to have another meeting if y'all want to stay.
Yeah.
It's the, this is the president, KYCC, right?
That's right, no questions go anywhere else but.
No.
She has all the answers.
I have zero answers.
Signature screens.
I am here.
Great pin.
You didn't know we were doing this?
Cody's only said he wanted to do this.
You knew. Were you asking?
You gotta go, you gotta go work. I mean, you could say I gotta leave.
Okay, these are all, um.
He was like packing up, ready to go, while I go, and it's like, where, KYCC, you're not going anywhere.
My, my heart did skip a beat right there when I ran that sucker and I looked at him, he was like, oh, crap.
I'll never live this down.
What time is that?
But, but you, I had her, oh, I'm sorry, we had a refrigerator invite to trust, it was just like, he's not even going to me. But as usual, I could tell you, I'm always scared.
You're not going to want to trust me. You know what they're doing now, they're having to go through those storage now.
Hey, Melinda, before we start this, don't we need to sign like seven of those audits? Wow.
It's page two, page two.
I think there's, I think we got to sign seven copies or something like that. Oh, okay.